We'll now call this meeting of the Jacksonville City Council to order. Thank you all for coming out tonight. We've got a big crowd in the audience and we also, I'm sure we have a lot of people watching on G10 television. To begin the meeting tonight, I'm going to ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Councilmember Jerry Bitton, all by the invocation. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, as always, we give you thanks. We give you thanks for this day, for the many blessings that you bestow upon us as the city of Jacksonville and upon us individually. We live in anxious times. We pray for peace. We give thanks for the diversity of races and cultures. And we pray that you would teach us that we will never be able to understand or to comprehend your love for us until we begin to love one another. Grant us your peace. We pray for our military personnel, who are serving, many of them in harm's way, standing in our place tonight to keep us safe, to give us peace. We pray for them and for their anxious families. And as always, we pray for our mayor and for our council, that your guidance and direction would always be with them. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
All right, council, you have before you copy the agenda for tonight's meeting. We'll also note that there's going to be a couple of items removed from the presentations of the items A and D. I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda this time.
Move for adoption of the agenda as presented and amended.
Second.
We have a motion in second. Is there any discussion? Here you're not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we have a few, still have a few presentations to make tonight. I'm going to come around the front here. All right, for the first, tonight, I'm going to ask our finance director, Gil Maids, and some of her staff who are with her tonight to join me up front. If you have any of your staff here, okay.
That work.
Okay, that's why we get these every year for 26 years. Gil, the city recently received notification that the city of Jacksonville and its finance department have been awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting by the Government Finance Officers Association for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2016. The Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting is the highest level of recognition given in the area of governmental accounting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by our local government finance and finance department. This is the 26th consecutive year that the city of Jacksonville and its finance department has received this recognition. The city would like to recognize the hard work and dedication of our finance department led by Ms. Gil Maids in achieving this outstanding award. Wait a minute. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Did you want to say? Okay. I didn't think so. She doesn't like to give speeches, but she's a heck of a finance officer. For the next presentation tonight, I'd like to ask Mr. Gary Willett and any of his family members that might be present tonight. And I think you're by yourself tonight, huh? Okay. Gary is our code enforcement officer here with the city of Jacksonville. And this award tonight is for the North Carolina Association of Zoning Officials Outstanding Member of the Year Award. This award is given in recognition of an outstanding member of the NCAZO for the preceding year. The award is presented to an active NCAZO member who has distinguished him or herself by loyalty and dedication to the association. Gary has been a member of the North Carolina Association of Zoning Officials since 1998 and became a certified zoning official in 2000. He has 20-plus years in the zoning field. He has served on the Board of Directors, has been an officer, and held the presidency in 2008. Gary volunteered to be a part of the certification committee in 2011 and continues to be an active participant and committee member. He has been instrumental in the growth and progress of the association, and this is the second time that Gary has been recognized with this award. First time being, he was a member of the year in 2006. Gary, we're very proud of your accomplishment there with your organization. Thank you very much. How many members are there in the organization?
Just two, sir.
Oh, okay. Thank you. All right, next, I would like to ask Chief Yanero, Director of Public Safety, to join me up front here. And I would like to ask Captain Randy, or Randall Norstrom, and any of your family members that are here that you wish to join you. You're doing it, aren't you?
Yes, sir.
I didn't believe it until he showed up, okay. Captain Randy Norstrom is retiring from the Jacksonville Police Department after 20 years of service. He has requested to receive his firearm service weapon and badge pursuant to City Administrative Policy 29, which is service guns and badges. Randall Douglas Norstrom was born and raised in Minnesota. He attended Mankato, is that right? Mankato State University, graduating in 1986 with a Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice. Randy completed basic law enforcement training at Coastal Carolina Community College in December of 1988, beginning his 20 years of service with the Jacksonville Police Department. He began his career with JPD in the Patrol Division and was promoted to Sergeant in 2008, to the rank of Lieutenant in 2011, and to the rank of Captain, which he currently holds, or did hold, in 2013. Captain Norstrom's long tenure with JPD has resulted in 20 years of positive law enforcement contacts, interactions, and partnerships in our community. And it's with great distinction, I am able to present with you, to you, your service firearm, for one thing, and then your captain's badge for another. Randy, it was great working with you all those years.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Go see you around, okay? There's a lot of people you worked with over the years, and people that can kind of keep you in a good spirit, and he was always pretty good at doing that. That's why I kept him around so long when I was there. Thanks, Randy. Thank you very much for your service. That brings us to our first section of public comment for the evening. I have some folks that have signed up, and I'll call them in order. In the first section here, session, we have Kevin O'Connor.
Good evening, Kevin O'Connor, 1108 Richmond Drive, Stafford, Virginia. And then, great to see you guys. I'm actually here to-
Gradulate Captain Norstrom.
He and I spoke earlier, and I just have to throw him underneath the bus here for a minute, if you don't mind. A lot of people here think he was a pretty good cop. I'm here to tell you that you were a pretty awesome Marine, Randy. Semper Fi. In any case, had to go there. I had to defend his honor a couple times while I was on active duty. And actually, believe it or not, and this story would have to come out later, I actually had to defend his honor once or twice while I was a cop as well. And that's a big old long story and a little bit of a good laugh. But I came down from Virginia, moved out of here about a year ago, and there's really not much difference. You know what? It's taxes up there, there's taxes down here. What little I'm following up there because of being stuck in I-95 traffic, there's really not much difference between what they're looking for and what you're looking for down over here. However, there is a huge difference as far as the taxes are concerned. Up where I'm at, they're so proud of their taxes, they let you pay them twice a year in June and December. Houses are basically out of control. Brand spanking new house is $430,000. So anybody who wants to talk about or have some issues with little old Jacksonville or little old Onslow County, as the saying goes, there is nobody that retires and moves north. So if there's anybody out there that's looking or wants to complain about it, all you have to do is move north and see what's happening up north, and you won't complain about little old Jacksonville and Onslow County. In any case, great to see everybody. Randy Semper Fi. Congratulations. Have a blast.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. Ma'am, if you would, please state your name and address for the clerk, please.
My name is Jackie Cummings.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
First of all, I would like to state that we didn't realize we were signing up to speak. We thought we were signing a roster to show we're here. However, is it time to talk about the extraterritorial jurisdiction change now, or does that come later?
Go right ahead.
Okay. I would like to know what the determining factor was for you doing that.
Yeah, we'll get- Council, that, Mayor and council, that is actually on the public hearing agenda, and at that time, the staff will be making-
Why don't we go back at that time and we'll talk then? How's that?
So is that when we're going to get-
Let's do it then.
The rezoning map?
The way we can keep it all together.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cummings. Miss, I think that says David Mohammed. Is that about the same thing? Let's wait till we get to Agenda Item Number Five. That's a public hearing that's going to be on the ETJ, and I'd love to hear from you then, okay? Okay, so now we're going to adopt our minutes and consent items. We have just one set of minutes from the August 8, 2017 workshop meeting, and we have five consent items on the agenda for tonight, four consent items, excuse me.
Move for adoption of the minutes and consent item agenda.
Second. We have a motion in the second. Is there any further discussion? Here you're not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So now we're going to go to the public hearing, I promised that we were going to come back to. And, let me pull this up. Do you have the printout on that? Okay. All right, now we're going to, if you'll hit that first one there.
There you go. I'll look on with Randy.
Okay, we're going to have a public hearing now on extraterritorial jurisdiction, the ETJ boundary limit, and this is a reduction of seven areas that include Onslow Pines, Southwest, Ramsey Road, Chief Court, Regalwood, Highland Forest, White Oak Estates, Aragona Village, Hunters Creek, and Piney Green, and Highway 24 area. And I understand this is not going to be the end of it, right? There will be other areas examined, is that my understanding?
This is the, Mayor and council, this is the first large area. There may be minor adjustments in the future.
Okay. That's what I'm getting at. There's going to be other adjustments. Anyway, Ryan King, our Planning and Permitting Administrator, will be presenting this item.
Good evening, Mayor and council. The night's staff has brought before you proposed ETJ reduction of the areas that you just mentioned. There are multiple areas throughout the city. This is about the fourth or fifth ETJ reduction that city staff has brought before you, primarily because of the changes in annexation laws and the fact that a lot of these areas are already developed in what we would consider a firm development pattern. As you'll see in the table, of the 2,760 parcels, only 171 remain undeveloped based on the tax office. So most of these are developed, and all but four of the parcels are zone residential. So even those 171 parcels that are undeveloped based on current zoning, if council approves this reduction and the county basically enacts a similar zoning classification, it's safe to assume that they would be developed residentially speaking, if they adopt similar zoning. So as stated, I've got before you tonight an overall map. There's two areas within the southwest area. There's a small area on Ramsey Road and Chief Court, the Regalwood subdivision and surrounding areas, the Highland Forest, White Oak Estates, and Aragona Village area off of Piney Green Road, the Hunters Creek southern area. As you may recall, we reduced the ETJ a few years ago, and we brought the Hunters Creek northern area out. And then there's a small area at Highway 24 and Piney Green. So to kind of bring those areas to, into a little bit more focus, this is the area that's immediately adjacent to Wilmington Highway, down near the Harley-Davidson dealership. As you'll see, the Harley-Davidson dealership is, let's back up. The Harley-Davidson dealership, just to orient everybody, I was going to get the color changed here, is this location here. So we're proposing to remove all of the area that's highlighted in the, with the black outline. As you'll notice, we are proposing to keep the parcels that immediately front Wilmington Highway. All of the area, you know, to the west of those, the highway parcels, will be removed if city council approves this ordinance tonight. So that's the first area, and we're going to go from basically the west side of Jacksonville up and then back around to the east side. The second area is in the southwest area. The Southwest Soccer Club soccer fields are located here, the old Strawberry Farm that a lot of us are familiar with. You've got Southwest Middle School here, and the residential area that's within that The next area is immediately adjacent to Ramsey Road and a few parcels on Chief Court. As you'll see, the area that's white on the west side of Chief Court is already in the county's jurisdiction. So if you live on one side of Chief, you come to the city. If you live on the other, you go to the county. This area would be removed from the ETJ with the adoption tonight, and everything would go to the county at that point. The next area is the Regalwood area. Piney Green Road is here. So you've got Country Club Hills, I believe is the name of that subdivision. You've got the Regalwood subdivision primarily, and a few outlier areas and developments. Most of this area, once again, residential and developed. There, on the other side of Piney Green Road, you've got the Highland Forest subdivision, White Oak Estates, and Aragona Village, the exception being those parcels that immediately front Piney Green Road. The next last area here is the Hunters Creek area. So Hunters Trail that ties into Highway 24 is here. So basically, all of the property that's within Hunters Creek would be removed from the ETJ. Large tract land is owned by Coastal Carolina Community College and is undeveloped. That's actually one of the few, I believe, non-residential parcels. And the final area is, you've got Highway 24 Freedom Way and Piney Green here. There's just a small area of parcels that are inland of the parcels that front North Carolina Highway 24. So as mentioned earlier, with the, with the changes at the, with legislation, there's even been a case where special legislation for Boone, they, they removed the ability to city, for cities to have an ETJ. And because of cases like that and proposed legislation that would pull the city's ability to have ETJ, we went ahead and started identifying areas that we would want to consider for removal. And like I stated one or two times already, this is about our fifth one, and we may look to do some additional in the future. Be happy to try to answer any questions that Mayor and council may have at this time.
Council, any questions? Mr. King.
Ryan, this doesn't have any effect on people paying taxes or who they receive their utility service from, is that correct?
That is correct.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
In this matter, we are required to have a public hearing, so at this time, on recess , we're going to meet and open a public hearing on this matter. And I'm going to start with Ms. Cummings, since we were up before.
Good evening again. He has answered one of my chief questions as to why we're changing the extraterritorial jurisdiction because of annexation laws changing. And I noticed here that the rezoning map, it says that we're going to rezone from residential to multifamily, low-density, to office and institutional. I live in White Oak Estates, and currently, we have businesses. We have a bakery, barbershop, we have group homes and other businesses. So I suppose that stipulation applies to some other areas in Onslow County that you're taken out of the extraterritorial jurisdiction, correct?
Actually, it's the next rezoning item. It doesn't have anything to do with you.
We hate to keep putting you on a hole like this, but I was so-
I don't have all these things adjoining, so I'm-
Let Ryan help you out.
I believe this actually, you said Highland Forest and by the White Oak Bakery. So let me add a little bit, if I may, Mayor.
Okay.
So currently, it's city zone. We have zoning that's been established. So the city of Jacksonville, council adopts this resolution tonight, the ordinance tonight, to pull the area out of the ETJ. The city zoning will remain in effect for 60 days. That gives the county staff, and we've already been working very closely with county staff, to assign zoning to the parcels that come out of the ETJ. So as I understand it, they're going to be before the planning advisor, or planning board for the county on, I believe, September the 3rd, and then after that, it will be forwarded to the county commissioners for a rezoning for the parcels that come out. There are some areas that are, that remain along Piney Green Road that would still have city zoning, but those are the areas that we're proposing to stay inside the city's jurisdiction.
Her promise is residential today, it will stay residential under the-
County zoning, is that a correct statement?
That's the way we understand it, but for folks that are not sure whether it's going to go from our current residential state to commercial, or from commercial residential, they would need to contact Onslow County Planning Office and find out what they're proposing for their specific parcel.
Well, he's clarified my next, my comment concerning the businesses we have. I wasn't aware that the front of our subdivision is Zone City, and we're in the area of Zone County, but it's the same subdivision.
Well, technically, all, all of the area is currently under the city zoning. And what we're doing is we're reducing the city zoning. Remember, when, at, there was a point in time when Onslow County did not have zoning? And that's why the city, under the state law, we zoned properties even though they were not inside the city limits. Now that the county has its zoning, and given the fact that annexation laws are changed, we see no reason for the city to have jurisdiction over these properties. So basically, what this action of the city council, if they approve it, does is it says, you're a county taxpayer, not a city taxpayer. You're now going to be under the county zoning, not the city zoning.
That clarifies, that clarifies other things, but I'm, I'm getting, I'm getting educated because there's so much you're saying that I was not aware of. It's not confusing because I understand, because I do not pay city taxes. We pay county taxes.
That's correct.
So I was, it's a little bit confusing the way things are done, but you have clarified my question.
Mayor, if I may- If you have any other questions, Ms. Cummings, please follow me and get up with the, either Ryan or, yeah.
Can I add one clarifying piece?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
So, the area within the ETJ, we have building inspection control, city zoning control, but they do not pay city taxes. They do not get water and sewer service. They do not get police and fire protection. So, in a lot of cases, people have to go to both Onslow County and the City of Jacksonville for a permit. Let's say, for example, you need a septic permit, you would go to the county, but then you would come to the city to obtain that building permit, and you would fall under the city zoning laws. This is simply going to revert all of that land back over to the county. So, you would be able to go to one place, Onslow County, for all of your development needs, any permitting, whatever your zoning standards are. The county commissioners would consider any rezonings, similar to what city council has done in the past.
Well, thank you for your clarification. This has been, has been quite enlightening because it is something that I was not aware of. Now I am.
And I'll be happy to answer any questions. I'll stick around after the council meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Cummings. That fit in perfectly. Yes, ma'am. Okay. We still have a public hearing going on here. Okay. And I will ask anyone else that's present that wants to speak to this particular topic here, and this is the extraterritorial jurisdiction that's being spoke of tonight. Please indicate by raising your hand. Nobody wants to speak about this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I'm with you.
By all means, please give your name and your address for the clerk there.
My name is Tom Orangia. I'm the owner of Jasmine Mubble Home Park, and also Glendale, which is in two of your jurisdictions there. I'd really love to see this ETJ thing go away, but the simple fact that it does something major for me, which allows me to build my property for a whole lot less expense. And as Mr. McNamee has pointed out, who I bought the property from, has been a hold down for anybody who is trying to provide decent housing for people who are low income or whatever on our end. And with that being said, I sure hope that y'all can do away with this and help us out.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing in this matter. Counsel, you're being asked to make this reduction in the.
Mayor Phillips, I'll make the motion to recommend approval of the ETJ boundary amendment and the associated amendment to the official zoning map.
Thank you, sir. Motion second. Any other discussion on the matter? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Measure passes. Next is item number six. It's a public hearing, a map amendment, rezoning from residential multifamily to low-density, and this is going to be.
Jeremy.
Jeremy.
Jeremy Smith will be giving this one. Let me pull my stuff up here. Don't come here. This is being so fast, and mine's being so slow. Okay. All right, this is rezoning from residential multifamily to low-density, to office and institutional. Okay. At 113 Country Club Road. And Jeremy is going to present this side of suit.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Agenda item six is a proposed rezoning submitted by Ramsey and Phillips Properties LLC for 1113 Country Club Road. You notice the location, very close to the intersection of Country Club and Western Boulevard. This is aerial photography of the site. You'll note that the aerials show a home on the property, but the city partnered with the current property owner to demolish that, and is completely vacant at this time, undeveloped. Again, this property is zoned residential multifamily, low-density. It is approximately 8.43 acres. The properties to the west are also zoned residential multifamily, low-density, and used for single-family homes. Properties across Country Club are a mix of residential uses of single-family and the Sandy Run Apartments. Properties along Western Boulevard to the east are zoned corridor commercial, and is a varied uses of retail and services. And there is some office and institutional zoning, again, diagonally across Country Club, where some doctor offices and offices are. The city's Camelane use plan supports this rezoning, as it has identified this property as neighborhood commercial. The map before you shows what the property would look like on our zoning map if rezoned. Parker and Associates submitted this application on behalf of Ramsey and Phillips Properties LLC. They, along with staff, will be happy to answer questions tonight. Last Tuesday night, at the Planning Advisory Board meeting, the Planning Advisory Board recommended approval of this rezoning request, accepting the evaluation found in the staff report, and that findings of fact A through J had been found in the affirmative, and that the rezoning advances the public interest by creating more development opportunities and more closely aligning with the Camelane use plan. Again, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
At recess, the regular council meeting, open up the required public hearing in this matter. Is there anyone present that wishes to speak to this particular rezoning?
Yes, sir.
Please approach the podium up here. And if you would, please state your name and address for the clerk.
Jacob Evans, Jr. I live at 501 Greenbriar Drive, on property on Country Club Road, right next to the proposed project site. My question is, there's a house located right across from Sandy Run Apartment. Is that a part of this project, that house, is that a private home, or will that be the main entrance?
Are you, is that the home that's on the property shown right now?
Yes.
As my understanding, that home is no longer there. It has been demolished.
That's a brick house right across the room.
That's on this property.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's right. That's right.
That's the Arnold property.
Yes.
Yes, that house is gone.
That building was removed. The city actually partnered and demolished it.
Is, now, the one I'm talking about, it's right across from Sandy Run Apartment.
Yes, sir.
200 Coleman Drive. There's a brick house, yes, sir. I just drove by it.
Not on this property.
Okay, then it is definitely not on this property. I apologize.
Okay.
Yeah. This property is completely vacant at this time.
What else is he talking about?
Because my question would be, where the entrance would be for the, enter your property? Would it be from Western Boulevard or Country Club Road?
As it stands right now, this property does not have access on Western, so if any development would come forward, they would propose to access off of Country Club Road. And through our reviews, most likely, it would line up with the intersection with Coleman Drive, or Sandy Run Apartments.
That's what I'm saying. There's a house straight across from Coleman Drive. Google it. You'll see it. There's a brick house there. Straight across from Coleman Drive.
I know the White House with the doctor's office.
Okay, all right. We're just going for all intents and purposes. We'll assume it's still there. We'll carry on with your point there. I mean, we're going to have to verify that. I mean, it shows a house on that lot now, but I don't know how.
And it's molded well, man.
I do not know how old this photograph is, so.
Are you talking about Ms. Hilda Brown's house?
No, it's right across from Sandy Run Apartment, 200 Coleman Drive, right straight across from the apartment there. That Coleman Drive Road, if you drive straight across there, you'll run into the house.
Let me ask you this. You know where the doctor's office is now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Where is it at in conjunction, in connection with that?
Let me put you, okay, you come out of 200 Coleman Drive, Sandy Run Apartment.
Right.
You come straight out.
Right.
You go either, you go left or right on Country Club Road. You go straight, you'll run into that brick house.
That house is not there. That house is gone. The Arnold's house is gone.
The brick house, okay.
That land's been vacant. You have the doctor's office, the vacant land, and then you have Ms. Hilda Brown's old house.
Okay, it's vacant.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so it's between the doctor's office. That's the entrance.
Yes. It's right there on the map.
So, it's changed. So, we're assuming it has changed since the photographs.
Matt, there, this is the doctor's office property right here.
Okay.
This is the entrance to Sandy Run Apartments. And this, again, is the property we're looking at.
Right, okay.
And so, this home right here, on circle, is no longer there.
That house is gone.
That house is gone.
Uh-huh. It's gone.
This one is gone?
Yes.
Can't you not?
Yes, sir.
It's gone.
Yeah.
Brick house, let it leave.
Oh, it left them.
Okay, I'm just going to bring out. I don't have 20/20 vision, but I will give you the address and get back with you on that. But my question was.
Let's go back to the question.
Here again, the entrance will be from, coming in right here on Country Club Road. That's the main entrance.
I don't know.
Likely, any review we would do, it would line up evenly with Coleman Drive in order to prevent any turning conflicts with any exiting or entering traffic.
Okay, and this is, this is going to be zoned resident, I mean, in.
Office and institutional.
Office and institution.
Correct.
Okay.
That's the proposed rezoning, the proposed rezoning.
And that's what the doctor's office is, correct?
The doctor's office is actually corridor commercial. And the doctor's office is actually expanding. They recently got site plan approval for in addition.
And my concern would be, that's a tremendous additional traffic on Country Club Road. If you live on Country Club Road now, it is a tremendous amount of traffic there. I'm not against it, but we need to really look at, from a safety standpoint, you're right across from public housing. In the afternoon, there's a bus stop there. In the morning time, it goes into the property. In the afternoon, it stops on the road. That is just, you know, an accident going to happen. It ain't waiting to happen. It's going to happen.
At this time, we have no proposals, but traffic is always one of our concerns, and it will be something that is scrutinized with any site plan review.
And then the next type of question would be, if you, if you rezoned that for business and course, I mean, restaurants, beer joints, all those things can come in there.
Right. And this, this particular zoning would not allow any of those types of uses. This, this particular zoning allows doctor's offices, religious institutions, churches. That's pretty much the gist of it. There's offices and.
You have a buffer plan in place. I'm sure.
Rezoning, it actually triggers that buffer requirement. Any, any project that would come on this property, we'd actually have to put a 30-foot Type A buffer, is what we call a Type A buffer, 30-foot of vegetation and a fence along both sides.
And that would prevent from traffic from driving on your property. That's what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Good question.
I was just, just curious, because it's a lot of traffic. It's, you know, and I just, you know, being on property owner down there, I just.
I understand your concerns.
My concern.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Thank you much. Appreciate it.
Anybody, anyone else wish to speak? Now, this is solely on this, on this particular rezoning. Okay? Thank you.
This is Rick Osborne, 100 Dunbar. I apologize. I'm a little hoarse. I'm representing Ramsey and Phillips Properties LLC. They actually have a contract on this property, and it is for a church to be established there. So, you're talking about the very basics of what this county is made up of, is great people. And they intend Mount Sinai Church, which is down off of Court Street, they intend to instruct, a construction, a structure there so that they can continue their ministry right here off of Country Club Road. So, we just would really appreciate your consideration. I hope this makes you feel better. That whole eight acres is going to be ministry representation. So, just a little bit more information, just thought it was necessary. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? So, you know what? I'm going to close the public hearing and reconvene the regular council meeting. Counsel, you're being asked to approve the rezoning.
Mr. Carter.
Mr. Carter.
I'd like to draw the counsel's attention to page one of the agenda item where we have the staff's recommendation. There's been a change in the law, and I just wanted to make you aware of this. In the past, we, the council has made motions, findings of fact A through J in the affirmative, advances the public interest, et cetera, and so forth. The legislature has now modified that, and it basically requires that the council actually fill in reasons that A is in the affirmative, B is in the affirmative, and so forth. So, what we have proposed for council, if you desire to approve this, is, again, there should be a, instead of a semicolon, should be a colon, but the council accepts the staff evaluations, that means you accept them, for findings of fact A through J in the affirmative. In other words, you adopt the staff's findings as your findings. So, that's the way we're trying to deal with that. And this is the first one, so I just wanted to point that out to you, as to why that's a little bit worded differently.
I think, I think I may have called the close too early. We're going to reopen the public hearing. Would you please state your name and address to the clerk, please?
Alexander K. Gray, 1012 Country Club Road.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gray.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor and Council, on behalf of the members of Mount Sinai Holy Church and those from the community this evening, we just want to say thank you for the time invested in looking at the decision to make this decision holistically. On behalf of Pastor Gray and the members that are here, we just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming out. Okay, now, we're going to close the public hearing, reconvene the regular council meeting. Counsel, you're being asked to approve the rezoning. And keep in mind what Mr. Carter just told us about.
I'll try it. Mr. Mayor, I move that council accepts the staff evaluation for findings of facts A through J being found in the affirmative, and that we approve the rezoning request. And we, the council, as part of our motion, believe that the rezoning advances the public interest by creating more development opportunities and more closely aligns the zoning with the future land use maps that identify the parcel as neighborhood commercial.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Is there any other discussion on this matter? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Now, we come to our last section of public comment for the evening, and I think Dr. Woodruff had given, given y'all some instructions prior to the meeting beginning. I do have a list where some folks have signed up to speak. And what we'll do is I'll allow you, as part of the public comment, to go up, come up and make your statements. There is a time limit. We like to limit it to three minutes on the comments, and just for the sake of moving things along. And I go down the list here. Mr. Royce Bennett?
Good evening. My name is Royce Bennett, 2475 North Woods Drive. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing me a minute to speak. I wanted to talk about the brunch bill for just a minute. There are three reasons that I oppose the brunch bill. Number one is that it benefits only a small number of people, the alcohol dealers in town, who, who stand to make a little bit more money by selling alcohol two hours earlier. Now, I've heard the argument that that means that we'll get more sales tax, but I would counter that by saying that there are studies, and I gave you copies of some literature, that quote studies that say that increases in number of hours of alcohol sales will increase alcohol-related accidents and crimes. So, I would propose to you that that will offset any amount of sales tax that you may gain. Secondly, I'd like to say that I believe this is bad public policy. The county and the city and the state have, have committed millions of dollars to a drug and alcohol treatment center because we have a problem here. And by allowing the dealers to have two more hours to sell their alcohol, most abused drug in our society today, I think that it's bad public policy. In fact, the opioid crisis is estimated to cost $1.3 billion to solve that. But every year, the cost of alcohol and other drugs is $6.8 billion every year. So, it just doesn't make sense to me how we're going to afford alcohol to dealers two more hours to sell their wares when we're trying to fight addiction. The third item that I'd like to mention is, I've heard the argument several times, it's only two hours. It's only two hours. Well, I want to turn that around, and you're right, it is. It's only two hours. Alcohol dealers have 19 hours every day, six days a week. They have 15, 14 hours on Sunday to sell alcohol. And I would propose to you that the two hours that you're asking, or that you're considering allowing them to sell alcohol are the two most sacred hours of the week to your faith community. And I would ask you to consider opposing the brunch bill. It's not necessary. It will cost us money. And I would ask you to just consider the faith community, and just give us two hours. That's all we want. It's two hours. They've got plenty of other time during the week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Lillian Husky?
Hello, my name is Lillian Husky, and I live at 514 Edwards Road in the southwest area of Jacksonville. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for allowing me to state my opinion about the brunch bill. I personally am against it, and the way it is now has been working. And what I say is, you don't, if it's not for a is you don't, if it's not broke, don't fix it. And are they gonna have designated drivers when they go out for breakfast? If someone needs to have a drink at 10:00 a.m., I believe they should be going to an AA meeting instead of to, to the bar because they have a drinking problem. Some people just need an intervention, and we could start at this local level by saying no. This country is in turmoil as it is, no one has any morals anymore, and it's not just about the restaurants making a little bit of extra money upfront, but in the long run, it could cost someone's life or family hardship because someone, people can't stop their addiction. Oslo County is also, as the same as Roy said, we're paying tax monies to build a rehab center because people can't control their drug habits. And so next, it would be our tax paying for alcohol rehab for those who have to have a drink at 10:00 in the morning. Why should we, as taxpayers, pay for someone else's bad habits? Excuses I've heard is that they can't get their beer to go out on Sunday morning on a boat. They've been doing it for years, getting it on Saturday evening. And then when, when, and then when they continue to get it, you know, on Saturday, and it's just, some people will say it's just a Bloody Mary or Mimosa. Well, it's still alcohol, no matter what you name it, it's addictive. So what we have, more drunks out earlier on the water and on the streets, especially after drinking for two extra hours when people will be getting out of church. If you need a drink at 10:00 o'clock, I say stay home, drink to your heart's desire. So perhaps we can start at this local level and just say no as a preventive maintenance for all those that have addictions, and not make alcohol readily available for those two hours at least one day a week. And thank you again, and this is just my opinion.
Thank you.
Joseph Capper, 147 Coutino Farms Lane. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I thank you for the opportunity to address the brunch bill this evening, and I come to you as both a PhD in psychology and a doctor of Christian ministry with a grave concern for the overall mental and spiritual health and well-being of our city. Extending the hours for the sale of alcohol is not in the best interest of our citizens. Numerous sources of evidence-based research, as well as highly respectable professional resources demonstrate why. First of all, North Carolina and Jacksonville already have an alcohol-related image problem. North Carolina Public Health Division of Health and Human Services reports 32% of high school students are current drinkers, 14% are binge drinkers. The internet website OnlyInYourState delineates the eight drunkest cities in North Carolina. Number one is Jacksonville with binge drinkers. 17.5% of residents are binge drinkers. This does not have to be the case. An article in the Journal of Public Health Policy states that restricting alcohol availability at the local level may be a plausible preventive strategy for a community's alcohol-related problems, especially traffic accidents and violent assaults. Furthermore, the Task Force on Community Preventive Services appointed by the U.S. Center for Disease Control found there was sufficient evidence in 10 qualifying studies to conclude that increasing hours of sale by two or more increases alcohol-related harms. Thus, disallowing extensions of alcohol hours by two or more should be expected to prevent alcohol-related harms. Also, North Carolina Public Health has stated that one effective strategy to reduce excessive drinking is, quote, "to continue to limit the days and hours alcohol sales occur." That is, maintain or decrease the days and alcohol, and hours that alcohol is sold. May I also appeal to you on behalf of the sizable majority of our city's citizens who are religious by conviction. Reverend Mark Creach, Executive Director of North Carolina's Christian Action League, persuasively notes that the U.S. Supreme Court found in Zorach versus Clausen that, quote, "When the state cooperates with religious authorities by adjusting the schedule of public events to sectarian needs, it respects the religious nature of our people and accommodates the public service to their spiritual needs. And not to do so shows a callous indifference to religious groups, which amounts to preferring those who believe in no religion over those who do believe." Finally, may I suggest that anyone who feels he or she needs to consume alcohol two hours earlier than they may currently contain it, or that they may be able to purchase earlier on Sunday morning, should seriously consider their diagnosis for being alcohol dependent. And we should consider our role as enablers or codependers of alcohol abuse. Thank you for your time and attention.
Alternate voting delegates for the 2017 North Carolina League of Municipalities Annual Business Meeting. There's three of us that'll be attending the, a meeting of the, myself, Mayor Pro Tem, Mike Lozar, and Councilmember Jerome Willingham. We need to nominate one voting delegate and one alternate voting delegate for the NCLM conference. So we need to appoint two people.
Mayor Phillips, nominate Mayor Sammy Phillips as the voting delegate and Councilmember Jerome Willingham as the alternate.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? Here none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. That brings us to agenda item number eight. This is the modification of the Alcohol Beverage Regulations Bill.
Attorney and I have comments on that.
Well, I'll begin, Mayor. I just want for the record to indicate for the listening public and that this is before you this evening because of an action by the Senate and the House, and that was the adoption of Senate Bill 150, 155, which authorizes city and county governments to adopt an ordinance to allow alcohol sales to begin at 10:00 on Sunday, where they presently begin at 12:00 noon. This was signed into law by Governor Cooper on June 30, 2017. And in the, the ordinance that's before you is a draft, is an ordinance that was prepared by the League of Municipalities, and as far as, there's several queries there that you can read and consider. This is before you because we have the staff, Richard and I, have several requests from the North Carolina Retail Merchant Association and some, several restaurants, and a, because this not only deals with being able to go into a restaurant and having an alcoholic drink at 10:00, but it also deals with the grocery stores, et cetera, their ability to sell wine and beer at 10:00 on Sunday morning. It's my understanding from Daily News articles at Swansboro, North Topsail Beach, Sur City, and Holly Ridge, all municipalities within Oslo County have already adopted this particular ordinance or something similar, but I just wanted to state that those facts as how it came before the council this evening.
City attorney just gave my testimony, therefore I have no other comments.
So we, we have, this, we get back to my right page here again. So council, we're being asked to consider the proposed ordinance that has been attached here, and I'll open it up for discussion amongst council, if there is any, or a motion, a motion to consider the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance as proposed, and I certainly appreciate your comments and your, your logic and your reasonings, and thank you for being here and presenting them tonight, but I'm not persuaded that anything that was presented to make me change my mind, so I'm, I'm gonna have to approve the ordinance as proposed.
I'll second. We have a motion in a second. Is there any other discussion?
I'll just echo what Councilman Warden said. I do appreciate the input from the public. It's just hard, sometimes we have to make tough calls. I know it's not gonna be popular, and sorry, the public comment's over, but this is a matter before us, and I think we have to look at it in totality.
Thank you very much for your comments, and the other thing is I want to echo what Mr. Carter said, that this was a, this is a product of the state legislature, the General Assembly passed this legislation. It's just another example of, you know, being able to dodge responsibility, in my opinion, on their part, push it off onto the local government to have to make the hard decision in this matter. So at this time, I'll, if there's no other discussion, there's a motion in a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. All right, so let the record show that it was a unanimous decision by the council. Next, we have our reports, and I will ask, I'll start with Mr. Bitner, Councilmember Bitner.
No report to see it.
Mr. Thomas?
No report.
Mr. Warden?
No report, sir.
Dr. Woodruff?
Counsel, have two items I'd like to report to you on tonight.
Hold on just a minute, let's have some order in here.
Two items we'd like to report on tonight. As you know, this city is now engaged in the One City Campaign, and I think you will agree that not only did we have one city yesterday afternoon, but we had one nation, which was really wonderful to see. I'd like to take a moment to have Glenn run some of the video. Sorry, we, we will come back to the Real ID in just a minute. I'd like to have Glenn run some of the video. For a few minutes on Monday, August 21, 2017, much of the city and this nation came to all look in the same direction, and that was Mother Nature's sun. Some people lined up for hours before the solar eclipse viewing party, which was held here in Jacksonville at Sturgeon City. It has been estimated that over 1,500 people from our community came together as one city, our city, my city, to see this eclipse. The staff of Sturgeon City hosted a party with beach balls, food trucks, games, and science. They helped hundreds to view the eclipse. It was a moment across the nation when the issues that divide us were forgotten. We looked to the skies, we shared as one nation, and here as one city. Personally, I'd like to tell you that I found the eclipse, as you see it here, one of Mother Nature's most amazing things, and I hope that every one of us will look forward to seven years down the road when we have the opportunity to see it again.
Save your glasses, right?
Save your glasses. The second thing that we would like to have as our One City Moment is an event that's going to happen this coming Thursday. At 9:00, we will hope that as a city, we will gather at the Monford Point Memorial for the Second Annual Observance. This is a wonderful opportunity for us once again to show that we are indeed one city, that this is our city, that this is my city as individuals. I will remind everyone, the purpose of the campaign of the One City is to show respect and to have civility with each other. Ron has a matter he would like to also share with the public tonight called Real ID. It's a very important change that is occurring relative to your driver's license and the ID program. So Ron, if you don't mind coming to the podium and presenting this, we'd appreciate it.
Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity, just calling everybody's attention, what's going on with what's called Real ID. After the September 11 disaster, the Congress passed a Real ID Act in 2005, the, which required basically federal agencies to have tougher security. The Real ID Act requires states to provide license and IDs with increased verification of identity and residency. This has been going on, obviously, since 2005, as the states work to get all their procedures in place. In North Carolina, a Real ID is determined by the state to be optional, it's up to the individual. For the, it's available for, for your driver's license, or if you don't have a driver's license as an identification card. And the ID itself has this gold star on it, which, which basically verifies that the state has in fact looked at the official documents pertaining to your identity and residency, which is, goes beyond what currently happens now. This is an example of a license that's being issued with the gold star in the corner, that's a Real ID. The state basically says your, your identification that you have to present is basically the same as previously. The documents, and this is where I'm not gonna get into the details of that, there's an ncrealid.com site, so you need to go and see which documents are acceptable, but they have to be, you know, like your official birth certificate and, and, or passport, I mean, they're very specific verification requirements. If you don't get a, a Real ID, you'll have a license that has those words on it, not for federal identification, so that's somewhat like a flag. On October 1, 2020, TSA will not accept any driver's license other than one's Real ID as identification, as your personal identification when you go through security. Actually, other federal agencies are gonna start doing that before that. For example, the bases informed me that if you currently use your driver's license as a means of identification to get on the base, if you don't have a Real ID starting 10, October 10th this year, you will need additional supplemental identification with your driver's license. So I mean, here's, here's basic, it's gonna be absolutely essential for air travel. If you don't go to other federal facilities and that, or you don't fly, then, then you, you, you know, be probably okay without it. But without, like I said, if you wanna get on an airplane, you know, you have to have other identification in addition to a photo ID. The, I'm just gonna talk, this is a summary of the Real ID requirements. As I mentioned, you can go to ncrealid.com to look, to see the requirements, but the state will, in fact, if you want today to go get a Real ID, if your driver's license is not expiring right now, you, they will issue you a duplicate ID, a duplicate driver's license in the Real ID, you know, format, so you're, you're squared away. And once you've done this one time in the future, then you can renew online, once you've done that initial identification and that. So, you know, the oper, the option is there, the state has been issuing Real IDs since May of this year, they reported today, they've issued about 100-plus thousand of them, but the thing is, you, everybody needs to decide what they need based on federal facilities that they access. So between now and, in October of 2020, you know, there'll be changing requirements, and that's all I have, any questions?
Will they charge for the replacement of...
Yeah, you'll, you'll get charged for a duplicate ID, whatever the cost is for that. For regular renewal, you know, there's no increased cost to your license or your identification, but it's just if you want to get the, the Real ID sooner, then you'll pay the duplicate issuance fee.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ron.
Reports from the management, city attorney?
No report, ma'am, thank you.
All right, with that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.